Good evening. The September 11th meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nguyen. Councilmember Nusma.
Here.
Councilmember Burns. Councilmember Sefferton. Councilmember Vell.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Hardeckeris.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Present.
And Mayor Bis.
Here. We have a quorum present and are prepared to do our work for the evening. First on the agenda this evening is my public announcements and proclamations, of which there are three. First of all, there are two proclamations that I will read portions of. The first declaring September of 2023 National Suicide Prevention and Action Month. Rather than read the text of all of this, I just want to remind us that we are in the midst of a very, very serious and frankly scary mental health crisis in this community, in this country, and in this world. We simultaneously saw the pandemic exacerbate and also make clear the extent of that crisis. And there's a lot that needs to be done. So I was very pleased to have the opportunity to at least add our voice to those stating the importance of this issue and viewing it as a crisis that demands action. So the proclamation has a bunch of whereas's that state a number of statistics and then ends as follows. Now therefore, I do hereby proclaim September 2023 as National Suicide Prevention and Action Month in the city of Evanston and encourage all citizens to take time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors over the next few days and to genuinely convey their appreciation for their existence by any gesture that they deem appropriate. The next proclamation is again in an effort to raise awareness to another critical issue that is broadly felt across our community and across our country, National Diaper Need Awareness Week. And I'll read the beginning of this because this is something that is kind of intuitive and yet maybe not always defined in a way that we're used to. Whereas diaper need, the condition of not being able to afford a sufficient supply of clean diapers to ensure that infants and toddlers are clean, healthy, and dry can adversely affect the health and well-being of children and their families. This is an issue that nearly half of families struggle with in this country. And so therefore, I do hereby proclaim the week of September 18th through 23rd, 2023 as National Diaper Need Awareness Week in the city of Evanston and thank Bundled Blessings Diaper Bank, their staff, volunteers, and donors for their courageous service during the crises and encourage citizens to donate generously to diaper banks, diaper drives, and support those organizations that collect and distribute diapers to families in need so that all Evanston children and families can thrive and reach their full potential. And I know that some of us will be at Bundled Blessings in the next week to show our appreciation and elevate in the community, the work that's being done and make others aware that they can be part of the volunteering and also the donating that needs to be done. Lastly, I just want to acknowledge that we are today commemorating the 22nd anniversary of the attacks of September 11th, 2001. I want to thank Evanston's first responders for every year putting together an event commemorating those attacks that I think is really important and allows us to think back to that time, hopefully think to some of the lessons that were learned and ensure that we commit ourselves not to repeat them again. I want to thank councilmembers Harris and Nusma for attending the ceremony. Councilmember Kelly spoke very eloquently at the ceremony. Thank you. And I want to thank again our first responders are Chief Pollock, Chief Stewart, and their personnel for making sure that we mark this day appropriately and for the work that they do every day at risk to their own safety to keep all of us safe. The next item on our agenda is public announcements from the city manager.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. Two quick announcements tonight. First, we have a presentation from Lauren Ruiz, who is our new ADA coordinator. So I'm going to ask her to come up to the podium and provide a brief presentation. We're very excited to have Lauren on board. She started three months ago.
Yes.
Director Thompson, is that right?
Yes.
So with that, I'll turn over to Director Thompson.
So I'm not Lauren. I know you all know that. So members of the city council, Mayor, city manager Stowe. So thank you all so much. First, would really like to thank this city council for moving the Commission on Aging to the Commission on Aging and Disabilities. That was really the start for this. I really want to thank city manager Stowe for prioritizing this position and also entrusting that position to Parks and Recreation. We do have several members of the Commission on Aging and Disabilities because we do recognize just how important disability rights and advocacy is for our community members. So for those members, if you all could just kind of raise your hand. Latre is our Commission on Aging and Disabilities Chair. Murphy Monroe is our ADA Advisory Group Chair, and we have several members here. We also have a lot of our staff here because we do understand just how important this is. So I will have Lauren Ruiz come up. We do have a quick presentation, so thank you all again.
Honorable Mayor, city manager Stowe, city clerk Mendoza, and members of city council. My name is Lauren Ruiz, and I'm the Disability Rights and Advocacy Manager. Thank you so much for welcoming this evening, welcoming me this evening, and I'm so happy to present you with the updates that we've made to our procedures related to ADA and disability services. We have several updates to our resources for the community. So an individual with a disability is able to make an accommodation for our programs, services, or activities. Some of these might include modifications to our policies and procedures, also an accommodation request for effective communication. So an example of this might include asking for a sign language interpreter or for closed captioning for a meeting. In addition, we have several department-specific programs and services available, and these are able to be seen on one of the tabs on our website. So a couple examples of these are our library has several types of equipment available for individuals with disabilities such as a magnifier and audiobooks as well. Our Parks and Rec Department also provides programming, special recreation programming, and inclusion services for individuals with disabilities or who may need some extra support to be safe and successful in our regular Parks and Rec programming. As far as the accommodation process goes, so individuals have a couple different options in order to make an accommodation request. One of these is contacting our Commission on Aging and Disabilities hotline. So at this number, that's included on the slide when we go back, an individual can call and leave a voicemail, and I will receive that message within 48 hours and return their communication. Additionally, we have an ADA and disability services request form through our 311 Help Center. So that can be, it'll be the other one actually. That seller one? So someone can call 311 and speak to one of the staff there to communicate this request. Also, they can visit our website. There we go. So the link is included in the disability services webpage as well. So someone can click on that link, and it would bring them to the main menu as you see here. And then the top choice there is the ADA and disability service request. So once clicking in that area, it would take you right to the form that you'd be able to fill out, and once submitted, that would go directly to me. Additionally, for accommodation requests, all of our Parks and Rec staff now have a link in our email signatures for an individual to click on, and it will go directly to the service request. And we'll also have flyers and signs available at all of our community centers by the end of September, providing this important information so that everyone can have access to any accommodations they may need. We've also updated our grievance procedures. So when I started in this position, I received communication from multiple individuals who had questions or who had suggestions for how the city could increase their accessibility at our programs, services, and activities. So we wanted to expand the option for individuals to communicate their concerns or requests. So we now have an inquiry slash grievance procedure. This slide that's up shows a visual representation of the process that we use for this. So this communication is used for both inquiries and grievances. So just kind of running through it quick, if we start at the top left, when the inquiry or grievance is received in the blue area, I will communicate with that individual within 10 business days to gather more details and information. Then within 15 business days of that initial meeting, I will provide written response to the individual who had the inquiry or grievance. So that will include an action plan that's put together by myself and any appropriate department staff or anyone who's involved with that project or that concern. Depending on if that action plan is acceptable to the community member who filed the inquiry or grievance, that would either be the resolution, or they do have the option to pass that along to the department director if they'd like more information or some changes. The department director would follow that same line of communication, meeting with the individual, and creating a new response. And then from there, if the individual would still like to continue looking into this matter, then it would go to the city manager, who would provide the final resolution. Individuals do have, if we could go back one, please. Individuals do have a couple options to communicate their inquiries or grievances. So we have an inquiry and grievance form. This link is provided on the website, and this is actually a Google form that they can fill out online. So they would note whether it's an inquiry or grievance, provide their contact information, and then provide additional details about the situation or the concern that they have. They're also able to email. We have a disability services email address, which goes directly to me as well, and my office phone number is provided on the website as well. This is the Google form for the inquiries and grievances. The city is really taking a team approach to accessibility, which I'm so proud of and so thankful for as well. We have a disability access liaison team, and while we haven't had our first official meeting yet, that's happening in a couple weeks, the communication that I've had with the representatives on that team has been so incredibly helpful and beneficial to our community already. So each department in the city has a representative who provides the expert voice for their own department. So they speak on the responsibilities included, any timelines that may be included, and it really gives us the ability to have a deeper connection with the community and kind of bridge that gap between city staff and the disability community. This also allows for prioritization of current accessibility requests and all of the ongoing projects that we have based on the ADA transition plan. And then additionally, we have, as Audrey mentioned, we have the ADA Advisory Committee. So this is a subcommittee of the Commission on Aging and Disabilities, and it includes our commissioners, residents with disabilities, care partners, professionals, and representatives of various community groups. So everyone on this committee is so passionate about inclusion and accessibility, and it's such a joy to be at these meetings and just hear personal stories and ideas for trainings for city staff and for the community. So this has been so incredibly helpful as well. So this committee meets monthly, and listed there at the bottom are our goals included in our work plan. So the collaboration, promoting execution of the ADA transition plan, providing resources and referrals for the community, and then initiating training and education for the community as well. And then lastly, if it's possible, I just wanted to show our, how to get to this information from our main city website. So from the main page, you would just go to residents along the top there, find ADA and disability services, and then all of the tabs are listed over on the left. So general information about accommodations and our grievances, we have our ADA transition plan included as a tab, the various teams that I mentioned, and then the inquiry and grievance policy. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
One second. Councilmember Nusma.
I do have one quick question, and given the fact that the ADA administrator is in the Parks Department, it's, between the two of you, you might have at least a ballpark of an answer, but how much is it going to cost us to bring all of our parks up to current ADA compliance? Capital L in a lot? Tens of millions, 20, 30, 40 million, 15 million? It's an easy question to ask. I understand it's-
Yeah, not a, because I think that's a, that's a hard question because there are a lot of components that you can add to make them accessible. And so those are things that we are, are looking at. From where you park, in a park that's something easy to accomplish that we can do, and you know, just other things like playground equipment or exercise equipment that can be used from a person in a wheelchair as well as a person who is using it without a wheelchair. So there are a lot of options that our department has explored, but a cost to that is, we, we don't know. Yeah.
I think I would be interested-
I think that's going to be difficult.
-as we continue to have discussions about our capital improvement plan-
Absolutely.
...and our legacy parks plan, and we all know that our parks are woefully under-invested.
Absolutely.
If we have some idea of how much that ADA is going to contribute to that cost, I think that would be helpful to know.
Right. So it's great that Lauren is with us because we really don't do any planning without Lauren at the table now, and so that's really important for us to, to ensure that any decision that we're making, we're using the ADA transition plan to make sure we're being thoughtful. So appreciate it. We'll be back on Monday for our capital improvement projects with our parks.
It's going to be awesome. Thank you.
All right. No questions? All right.
I just want to say thanks again for the commissioners for being here this evening. Thank you, Director Thompson, for the energy and attention that you've brought to this issue, and thank you, Lauren, so much for all the work that you've done in a very short amount of time.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a short presentation from our Health and Human Services team. As it turns out, we in Evanston share a border with the city of Chicago, which is often known as the raddiest city in the country, and so we are not immune to that issue as well. So I've asked Greg Olson and Ike Agbo to come forward and share some of the work that we've been doing to combat this issue.
Good evening, council. City manager Luke Stowe, thank you for having me here to talk about our rat control program. My name's Greg Olson, and I'm the Public Health Manager for the Health Department. So in years past, our past program operations- All right. So in years past, our operations consisted of a partnership between city staff and a contracted pest control operator. City staff would handle the administration side of it, and the contractor would handle the inspecting and the baiting of the public areas. Over time, though, the efficiency and communication of the partnership declined. There was communication breakdowns between staff and the contractors as well, and ultimately to the residents. And this graph is just showing, the blue line is the number of requests that we've received, and the red line is the average amount of time each request is open. So what ideally you would like to see, as that blue line decreases, the red line should also be decreasing as well. We have less requests, we should have more time to spend to each one, so they're open for less. But that's, we've seen the opposite. So because of that, we took the program in-house, and we hired two staff designated for rat control. They are out in the field five days a week, and since bringing the program in-house, we've seen an improvement in efficiency and communication already. Again, the blue line is the number of requests, the red line is how long they've been open, and you can see as we get more requests, our cases are actually being closed quicker. So that's, that's just showing that our, our staff are in the field, and they're being more effective with the time that they're using, which ultimately leads to happy residents. So our treatment strategies, currently we use two rodenticides. They're two anticoagulants, and both of them take about five to seven days after ingestion to be a lethal dose. We receive questions, concerns among residents about their animals, if, what happens if they eat some of the bait? What happens if they eat a rat that ate the bait? That's a normal concern to have, but for every chemical, there's a thing called the LD-50, and essentially it is the dose of the chemical that would be lethal in 50% of a, of the experimental population. So the LD-50 for the bait we use is one ounce per one pound. So essentially, a 10-pound dog would have to eat 10 ounces of bait for it to have a 50 chance of it being lethal, and we don't have, we have less than 10 ounces of bait in each of our bait boxes, and they're tamper resistant, so a dog would have to get into a whole bunch of boxes or eat a whole bunch of rats, and even then, they just have a 50% chance of it being lethal. But if a resident wants to take a precaution, the antidote is just a simple vitamin K injection, and since I've been here, there hasn't been any adverse reports. And then another option that we recently purchased is a forced CO2 canister. So essentially, we will use that to force CO2 underground in the, the rat burrows themselves, and the CO2 will essentially put the rats in a nice pleasant forever sleep. It's a more humane way to go about treatment, but, and it also lessens any chance of any sort of secondary poisonings. So we're excited to use that. Another thing we're using coming up is a new kind of material. It's a mesh liner. It's a woven stainless steel that gets installed about four inches below the soil, and it's impenetrable to rodents, so they can't burrow through it, so they can't be living underground. And the cool thing is that it still allows plant roots and grassroots to grow through it, so it won't disrupt any of the, the plant life in the area. And we are going to be installing one in a planter probably within the next three or four weeks, and depending on how it goes, we'll, we're hoping to further install in some of the downtown planters. Some potential options you've probably heard of, fertility rodenticide, which on the surface sounds great, you know, the, the rats eat the bait, they don't have any, any more babies, and the rats are gone. But it's unfortunately not that simple. The bait itself, it's a liquid, and it has to be used continuously. There can't be any breaks in treatment, and since it's a liquid, when it gets really cold, it freezes, and it's pretty much of no use. So as of right now, we can't use it here because of our cold winters, but we're, we're keeping the eye on it just in case they change the formulation. Another future option is smart bait boxes. So these are just normal-looking bait boxes, but they actually send an alert to staff anytime there's activity inside the box. Some of them can actually differentiate between whether it's a rat that entered the box or a mouse or a chipmunk. I don't know how they do it, but they can. Some of them incorporate a electrical shock into it, so it's a, a quick humane way to do it. Then they remove the rat, and it sort of resets itself, so there's a lot of moving parts. But these boxes are expensive, and our boxes have a habit of going missing, whether they get moved or whether a garbage truck runs them over. So bait box replacement would be pretty expensive with these, so we're keeping an eye on it to see if prices go down. Something that is not an option, which I'm sure everyone here has heard of, is feral cats. There has been no evidence that feral cats reduce city rat populations. There is a recent study in Brooklyn that took place in a waste management warehouse, and it involved, the scientists of the study observed about 150 rats in a colony inside the warehouse. There were five feral cats on the property, and they observed it for 79 days. And throughout those 79 days, there was only three encounters that they recorded, and the warehouse was equipped with motion-activated cameras, so they, they recorded everything. And of those three incidents, only two involved actually killing a rat. And the scientists believe that this is because rat, or feral cats, they want an easy meal. You know, rats are big. City rats are bigger, and to a cat, they can be intimidating, and a, a cat would much rather go after a mouse or a small bird. So feral cats, as it right now, is just not an option. So treatment aside, every single study says the same thing. The most important thing you can do is control garbage, and education is a top priority when it comes to that. So we're in the field talking with residents. We do Ward Rat Walks. We did one at Ward 2 not too long ago. It was pretty successful. We had a decent turnout, a lot of good questions, a lot of good suggestions. We also do a citywide rat walk, and then also this fall, probably end of September, 1st of October, we'll be having a Rat Academy. It's a virtual webinar, most likely during the lunch hour, where it's just another opportunity for residents to interact and have their questions answered. So again, education is, is, is the key, is, that's our main concern. However, we do know that some individuals need, you know, a gentle push. So that's where the enforcement aspect comes in. Public health, we're not in the market of making money. We don't want to do that. We want to have compliance to ensure safety. So if need be, we have a rat inspection notice form, which is up there. Our inspectors, when they're in the field, if they see any contributing factors, they'll fill out the form, leave their comments, and leave a copy at the property. And it's important to note that this notice is not a official notice of violation. This is just a, a friendly sort of, you know, heads up that, hey, we noticed this on your property. Let's, can we do something to take care of it? And then if we go back in a couple of weeks and it's still there, then that could begin the notice of violation. So it's always important that residents, everyone, just contact 311 if you see a rat, but not if, just if you see rats, contact 311. If you have, if you see garbage overflowing, if you're out walking your dog, you see a garage in disrepair, just let us know so we can go out and work with the property owners to take care of it. And we can also be reached at health@cityofevanston.org. And lastly, here is the heat map from January of this year to August. And as you can see, the, the requests are pretty much all over the city. One thing to, to keep in mind is this isn't really a representation of how many rats are in the city. This is just showing the people who have saw a rat and then took the time to call us. I'm sure there's a lot more people, a lot more residents who are seeing rats and just not letting us know about it. So the more people we can have calling 311, the better our response can be. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Council, councilmember Harris, and then we'll figure out this. Is your light on?
I set my light on a long time ago.
All right. Councilmember Reed followed by Harris.
Thank you.
And as the deepest reddest, you know, the 8th Ward has a lot, we share that border with Chicago. I feel like I'm, every time I walk my dog at night, I'm taking a rat walk of my own. So, one, I appreciate this discussion here. One, what is, I don't think it's, I don't know if I read this, if this was a quote of yours, if I read an article, and then I thought this, so I might be stealing something. But obviously, we're not going to get rid of rats completely, and that's not really, and I don't think that should be an expectation that we have, that there will be no rats in our city. You know, something else created those, and they deserve somewhat of a life as well. So I am curious, how do we judge what is, what's an acceptable number of rats to have in the community? When do we have to just say, hey, this is something we have to live with?
I mean, I don't, I don't think someone would say, I'm okay with, you know, this amount of rats. It really just, what we're trying to do is have rat education just sort of be a public mindset. So just to have individuals know that a service is here, and that if they see it, they should, it should be a collective sort of group effort, that we're all involved in reporting it. But as far as like, that's the tough thing about judging success of a program like this, because we're reliant on the complaints that come in. Obviously, we know there's a problem, but it's hard to say what would be considered a success.
Yeah. Thank you. And also, I mean, we know that, we classify rats as vector, as organisms that carry disease. What diseases are being transmitted between humans and rats nowadays? What do we have to worry about?
So the main thing is leptospirosis, and then also plague. Plague is still here in the U.S. It's, one case is considered an outbreak. There hasn't been any, knock on wood. But really, those are the main two. The other two is, there's been studies that have shown the negative mental health effects of living with rats. And it's not only seeing rats, it's the thought of them being in your environment can deteriorate your mental health. And mental health is one of our key points in our E-Plan, so it all ties together.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And so, and I suppose, you said leptospirosis?
Yep.
Have we seen any cases of that recently as well?
No, we have not.
So, and then the mental health, that's something, how do we measure that? Are we getting numbers from clinicians on how many folks are, is there a diagnosis that is associated with?
Yeah, that's hard to measure, again. There isn't anything locally. A lot of the studies that mentioned mental health are on a much larger scale. And as you can imagine, it's hard to get that information, so the sources of getting it are tough.
Okay. Thank you. Two last things. One, the mesh liner, you said the initial one is going in downtown?
Close to downtown, yeah. We're going to try it at a different planter, and if it works, then we'll consider doing it at the planters downtown.
And I want to note, I mean, Howard Street is a hotspot, and we are obviously the border with Chicago. We have a lot of planters, and the rats have taken over a number of our planters along Howard Street, so I'd love to see those mesh liners there. And then lastly, I don't know where my time is. You know, as you noted, we, trash is really the, you know, there's not much you can do if they have an infinite source of food behind every house. And while I haven't made a referral on it yet, I really am interested in us having a conversation, at least at some point, about looking at a new way of collecting trash. You know, there are European countries, particularly, I'm thinking of Norway and certain cities there, where there are, instead of, you know, sending a city worker to each individual's house to pick up the trash that they brought into their house themselves, there are centralized locations throughout, in every neighborhood within walking distance, where folks take their trash, separate their recycling and whatnot, and it goes underground and is stored there, and then city workers come to those centralized locations to pick up the trash, as opposed to having a feast behind every single house. And, you know, I know there are concerns about, you know, whether or not, here in America, and here in Evanston, we could handle having folks having to walk a few blocks to, or a block to get rid of their trash, but I think it's worth a discussion, and could really make, lead us to making headway in reducing trash. In particular, if we try, I see. In particular, if we tried this out on Howard Street, or in the 8th Ward, where we are the border, maybe that could even help cut down some of the rat issue further into the city. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
I just wanted to say thank you so much for hosting our rat walk and providing information to our residents on how we can be better stewards of helping the situation. We're part of the problem, so I just wanted to tell you, you and your team, thank you so much.
And with that, thank you, Mr. Olson. Thank you, Director Agbo.
Thank you very much. Hope everyone is getting ready to enroll in the Rat Academy. The next item on the agenda is communications from the city clerk.
No communications at this time.
I neglected to make one of my announcements, which I should make before the current departure from the room is complete, because we have a guest with us who I wanted to introduce. We have with us an elected counselor from Milton Keynes in England, Chris Williams, has joined us this evening. Milton Keynes is a relatively small town in England, about halfway between Oxford and Cambridge. You may know of it as being on the wrong side of a deeply emotional dispute internal to fourth-tier English football. I know of it as a place that often confuses me about whether or not its name has something to do with John Maynard Keynes, which it turns out not to. But we should all be on our best behavior, because American democracy is being observed from abroad this evening. And so please, Councilwoman Williams, welcome. The next item on our agenda is public comment. We have a freakishly brief public comment this evening. There is no one who signed up in person, there's no one who signed up at all to speak in person, so we have some online, some online speakers. But unless I got bad information, no one here has signed up to participate in public comment. Okay, it looks like that is correct. In that case, the online public comment will begin now. It starts with Michael Vasilko, who will be followed by Mary Rosinsky, and then Tricia Connolly. Mr. Vasilko? He's not online at this time, so we'll go on with Mary Rosinsky, followed by Tricia Connolly. Ms. Rosinsky?
Hi, thank you very much. I had two things I'd like to say, is one regarding the lights at James Park. I'd like to see if we could put that on hold, or not use bonds to finance those. I think one of the things in Evanston is that we have a lot of things we'd like to do to make our city better, but I think we also have to prioritize what is the health and safety, what is the maintenance, and then what is the wish list? And I'd rather, as a resident, not see us taking out bonds for that, but maybe looking into, we're doing the 2024 budget, and consider putting it in there. If we didn't get around to it this year, then we just didn't get around to it this year. But we have things like at the Noyce Center, Art Center, Noyce Cultural Arts Center, that have been needing to be taken care of for years, and have been on the capital improvements, gosh, for I don't know how long, like, top pointing, and ADA ramp, and things like that. So I, you know, I think we just need to discuss what are our priorities. The second thing I wanted to bring up, well, has to deal with the appointments. This time, it's the first time I can ever recall seeing a special, a special item regarding a committee, and that would be the NU City Committee. And I just, it just strikes me as odd that we are isolating that, that committee right now, after Mr. Schoenfeld, who's been on it for 20 years, had to take action as a private resident to stop the legal shenanigans that was going on between our old city attorney and interim city attorney and Northwestern, to take away the voice of Evanston residents. And I think we need to be very careful that we uphold an impeccable standard of uniformity across our boards. And I looked at the, all the committees last night, when I saw this on the agenda, and I think there's 12 committees that have different time limits, some are unlimited time limits, some of them are two years, five years. And on the pages itself, it doesn't say any term limits, in terms of you can only be appointed once or twice, which brings up the question of all the vacancies that we have on our boards and commissions. And if there is someone who's been on it for two or even three terms, do you just roll them over? I'm not saying I wouldn't do that. I think our history, like, especially with the NU City Committee, is so imperative. If we're going to have an understanding of how that particular court order decree committee came into place, but I would hope we would just treat it like the other committees, and appoint Mr. Schoenfeld. And then, maybe if we have to have a special item on council to only talk about committees, let's do it that way. Well, thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you very much. The only other two people signed up to speak are Michael Vasilko and Tricia Connolly, neither of whom is in the Zoom. So I'll pause for a second to make sure that's still the case. Seeing as that is still the case, that concludes public comment for the evening, and brings us to the consent agenda. Are there items, well, there's a few items that I know need to be removed. I was told A8 needs to be removed, is that correct?
Yes.
FB2 needs to be removed, and AP2. So the items so far pulled are A8, FB2, and AP2.
A4.
A4?
A2.
Did you say P2?
A2.
I'm sorry. A2?
R1.
R1. So at this time, we have A2, A4, A8, R1, FB2, and AP2. Anything further?
HS1.
HS1.
And AP2, if someone did not already pull that off.
It was pulled.
Okay.
So at this time, we have A2, A4, A8, HS1, R1, FB2, and AP2. Is there any other, I think the body language seems to be settled, so entertain a motion?
I'm going to make a motion. I will move the consent agenda minus the items that were pulled off. Minus A2, A4, HS1, R1, AP2.
And A8 and FB2?
Yep. All of those.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of the consent agenda with the exceptions of the following items, A2, A4, A8, HS1, R1, FB2, and AP2. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Vell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda Kades?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the consent agenda is passed. Is there a motion, am I right that Councilmember Burns is currently chairing APW?
I'm.
Oh, you are? I'm sorry. Okay.
It is me. I will move item A2, approval of contract with Jasco, Jasco Electric Corporation for the James Park Athletic Lighting. This is bid 2339.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves approval of contract with Jasco Electric Corporation. Councilmember Newsma seconds. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you. I'll support this, but I just wanted to point out, for the sake of the public who wasn't able, who weren't able to attend APW, Ms. Rosinsky's concern about the bonds being issued. Our interim corporation counsel, Alex Rugge, explained that we aren't obligated to fund this through our, we're only voting to approve, authorizing the contract, but that we can, it can be funded however we decide down the road. This was simply what we decided for the 2023 budget, was to allocate it via these bonds, but that was also, as I pointed out prior to our knowledge, that we had tens of millions of dollars in excess, above and beyond our reserves at that time. So we'll be discussing this at Finance and Budget tomorrow, bond issuance, but I just wanted to make that clear for, I know Ms. Rosinsky expressed a concern about issuing a bond, so that was clarified at APW, that we do not, in fact, this does not have to be paid through, through bonds. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Vell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda Kades?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the contract is approved. Councilmember Reed, would you care to make a motion on item A4?
I would actually ask that someone else make this motion.
Would anyone like to make a motion on item A4?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move item A4, approval of a one-year contract extension with Drexwood Partners LLC for lobbyist services.
Second. Councilmember Newsma moves approval of the one-year contract extension. Councilmember Reed seconds. Is there any discussion?
Oh, is my light not working? Maybe that's why I thought I flipped on the light.
That's weird, because it worked for, it must have, yeah.
Oh, maybe none of the lights.
No, Councilmember Hadda Kades' word.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. All right. Councilmember Reed?
All right, thank you. I am, so again, this, you know, this isn't a huge dollar amount, you know, $60,000. I don't feel as though we've, I'm not seeing what value we are getting out of this. I know that we had an update a few months ago, maybe half a year ago at this point, from Drexwood. I don't remember the last time we received the quarterly update by email, or a written Not often, yeah. And, you know, I even know of a grant opportunity that we're seeking from the federal government, and it's going to take staff time to get that grant done, and take away from some of the important work that we're working on internally. So then, why the heck are we, you know, paying for lobbyists who are not supposed to be quite lobbyists, but, you know, seeking grants for us if we can't put that kind of work on to them? So I guess, one, I want to get clarity from the manager, and from whoever understands this contract. So are we able to, you know, if there's a federal grant that we're seeking, are we able to ask Drexwood to step in and provide technical assistance to seek that grant? Or if someone from?
Sure. Good evening. I'm happy to start. They did, they have been providing quarterly reports. They provided a Q1 report earlier this year, and then they were present here for, they did a presentation for us, instead of a written report for Q2. So I just wanted to share that with you. And I think some of the grant opportunities that come along, some of them are very specific and niche, right? And so we have to seek out subject matter experts in those given cases, so.
Can anyone name the, like, how much money have they brought in for us? What money have they produced?
$1.6 million, actually.
And for what?
A million dollars for Twigs Park, and $600,000 for the living room. I mean, that was.
Okay. No, and important money, but, you know, I, we can talk, I can get more details offline, but, you know, sometimes I'm curious if this is money that we would have gotten without Drexwood, or if it's money specifically because of Drexwood, or having, you know, a lobbyist. And so I just feel like I'm not getting enough information on this. It's a small dollar amount, so I'm not going to spend any more council time on this, but I'm going to be voting no for now.
Councilmember Kelly?
Just a question that's related. Do we have a grant writer, or have we posted a position, or did we approve a position? Where do we stand with that?
So there was some discussion for the fiscal '23 budget of hiring a dedicated grant writer, and our concern with that is there's so many different, you know, it might be affordable housing, it might be cybersecurity, all kinds of different grants, so we decided, instead of hiring one grant writer, to take it case by case, and hire subject matter experts where appropriate. And just to follow up on Councilmember Reed's inquiry, Councilmember Newsma asked earlier today, and actually, it's over, there was $600,000 from the state through Senator Fine's office, $650,000 earmarked through Congresswoman Shikowsky's, and this is for the living room project, and then $1 million for the Beck Park. the living room project, and then a million dollars for the Beck Park in purpose.
I just, I'm, I'm a big believer in being really, really honest about these things, and, and I'm well aware that there's a lot of efforts in the world to double, assign credit. I think with all respect, the funds secured through Congresswoman Shikowski are not really attributable to Drexwood. The $600,000 that Laura Fine secured would not have happened had I not communicated that need to Drexwood, and they went and found a spot in the budget where there was funding available and explained to me that I could make that pitch to Senator Fine. It is, it is, with that and the million for Twigs Park, I'm genuinely certain that if not for this contract, we would not have secured those funds. And I, I think your question's a really good one. I recognize there's a lot of, like, everybody takes credit once a good thing happens, but with the $1.6 million I was talking about, that was not the case.
Thank you. I can't flip my light on, but, you know, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I do think, I mean, I would like to revisit that, the grant writer. I mean, I guess it's separate from this, I think, or maybe it somehow interfaces, but I do think it's important that we have a grant writer. Seems to me on staff, when I look at it, most cities have grant writers, you know, that are working around the clock. I think there's just so many grants out there to be, you know, that, to have it local here at our, in, in, at our city, I think is important. But I think it interfaces a little bit with this. I'll support this position, but I think at least additionally, we should consider this for the 2024 budget. That's all.
I'll put you back on the list, Councilmember Reed, but first, someone who has not yet spoken would like to speak, Councilmember Nusma.
I was just going to make the point that the city manager made, so I'm good. Thank you.
Councilmember Reed with three minutes left.
I feel almost muted without a light, but thank you. You know, I, I, you have flipped my vote. I mean, a 10 times return is, even if it's just the $600,000 or the million, whatever it is, I just, I really want to get those regular updates to understand, and, and my concern is that sometimes there is double credit taken for something, and I, and I will double down on Councilmember Kelly's request that I, I think, you know, we are a large enough organization with enough complex needs that we need an on-staff grant writer who can take some of the load off of the various departments to specifically work on grant writing and, and work with the departments to, to get, to get grants done. So I, in fact, will be voting yes for this, and thank you for the explanation.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hara Kharis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the extension is approved. Councilmember Reed, would you care to make a motion relative to item A8?
Yes, I move item A8, Resolution 52-R-23, authorizing the city manager to execute the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Evanston and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council 31, AFL-CIO, for and on behalf of the Evanston City Employees Union Local 1891.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves approval of Resolution 52-R-23. Councilmember Harris seconds. Councilmember Nusma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's come to my attention that there is a typo in the contract language, and I would like to ask Acting City Attorney Rugge to address this matter.
Thank you, Councilmember Nusma, Mayor Biss, City Manager Stowe, and members of City Council, Alex Rugge, interim corporation counsel. In section 9.9 overtime, currently it reads at two hours. It should read four hours, so we're just requesting this change per our agreement with ASME.
And I believe this is on page 124 of 468 in the council packet, and it's the two hours, or four hours rather than two hours guaranteed minimum.
Yes, that's correct.
And I recognize this is very concrete and straightforward, but I think, given both the rule that I've sought to impose and also just the size of this issue and the number of dollars at stake, I'd like to have this in writing before a vote occurs on this amendment.
Second.
I can work with Acting Attorney to do that if we want to move on to another item while we're working on this.
Well, Councilmember Nusma moves to make the just described change in the contract. Councilmember Reed seconds. Perhaps while it's put in writing, I think Councilmember Reed wanted to speak, so why don't we go to Councilmember Reed, and then we'll, perhaps when that's done, we'll have the amendment before us to vote on. Councilmember Reed?
Thank you. Maybe I'll speak long enough to, I, I just want to say that I, I, I'm glad we are here. We, this was a, 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 a good, long negotiation. We got up to a dollar amount that is obviously agreeable to both parties, and I think our city workers have long needed a raise, and I particularly think since the, you know, with the inflationary pressures caused primarily by the pandemic and things that happened as a result of the pandemic, I, I think this is extremely important. I'm happy that we're here, really proud of this council for agreeing to this and moving forward with a 21% increase for our employees. This is much deserved, much needed, and so I hope our employees realize this. But there are also some other key points to this agreement that I think should be highlighted. I see our Northwestern folks are back with us for our first meeting, and so we have members of the media, and so Manager Stowe, or, or someone from the, the team who feels comfortable. I'd love to highlight some of the progressive changes that have happened as a result of this contract. Such as increase in...
Sure. And actually, since Alex Rugge was part of the team, I'm going to let Alex speak to some of those items.
Sorry, taking you away from doing that.
One second, let me pull up the memo. Thank you for your patience. So just simply, this is a four-year union contract. It is the last of our union contracts to be executed this year. All of the union contracts have a four-year term, which we're very proud of. So this four-year contract includes a wage increase for the ASME union of a totality of 20%. It'll be 11% in the first year and 3% for the three following years. It also marks Juneteenth as an official city holiday granted to ASME union, and that is granted to all city staff. Additionally, the contract provides a one-time ratification bonus of $1,250 for each union member, and that will be a one-time bonus paid 30 days after ratification, which is potentially this evening.
And I believe there are changes to, I don't want to speak on a turn, paid leave FMLA?
I, I believe there's a, there's a lot of significant changes within the tentative agreement. This was a lengthy agreement in which I was...
Yes.
...roped in mid, mid-negotiation.
Yes. I just want to highlight that, you know, this council has gone a long way to make sure that the folks that work for the city have what they need to thrive in our community. There's always more that we can do, but I do want to highlight that I, I think this is a really good agreement. This builds on top of what we've done with the, the fire department this year, what we've done with the police department, and now with our city workers. And, you know, certainly we have our non-union employees that will be coming next. There obviously isn't a negotiation in the same way, but I trust that Manager Stowe will make the appropriate changes there. And, you know, for, for those, you know, in the community who, you know, feel like there's a lot changing with the city and we're, you know, seeking fair work week laws and increases in the minimum wage, the city is doing that work too. We are making sure that we are being good employers and that we are providing our employees with the wages and the benefits that they need to, to, to live lives of dignity. And I hope to see us in four years build on what we have done here, and so I'm looking forward to continuing that work. Thank you.
The, all of you should have the amendment in writing in your inboxes, and therefore I'm comfortable moving forward. Again, the motion was made by Councilmember Nusma, seconded by Councilmember Reed to amend Resolution 52-R-23 relative to the minimum overtime. Would the clerk please take the roll on the amendment?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hara Kharis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the resolution is amended. And now, would the clerk please take the roll on Resolution 52-R-23 as just amended?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hara Kharis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and Resolution 52-R-23 as amended is passed, and I just want to add my voice to those thanking our workforce for doing remarkable work on behalf of the people of Evanston every single day. And I'm glad that we've reached this agreement and are able to move forward, working together again on behalf of our shared constituents. Would someone care to make a motion on item HS1?
I will.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move item HS1, Resolution 53-R-23, extending the effective date of ordinance 24/023, the Evanston Fair Work Week ordinance to January 1st, 2024.
Second. Councilmember Nusma moves passage of Resolution 53-R-23. Councilmember Reed seconds. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Muted without my light.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes. I want to highlight two things here. One, I, I do appreciate that this is being brought forward. I think there was an announcement made before this was brought forward, which I'm not excited about. I, I do think we need to get clarity on what the powers of the city manager are in relation to, you know, there, there's notice that went out a, a week or two ago that said, hey, we're extending the effective date, and that seemed to be, you know, for example, this could hypothetically not pass today, and this council could choose that we don't want to extend it. I don't think that's going to happen, but that could happen. And so I just think at some point, we need clarity from our law department. I, I think it's one thing for a city manager to, you know, to use their executive power to deprioritize enforcement with limited resources. I think that's well within the, the power of the executive, but I think it is different for the executive to legislate and change the effective date of something that the council has duly adopted. And so, and, and this discussion came up with the plastic bag ban as well. Again, there's a difference between deprioritization, and so I, I just think we need that clarity, because I think I even heard Mayor Biss say at that time that you believed that it was within the city manager's authority to delay essentially the effective date for some businesses with the plastic bag ordinance. So I think it would be worth it for all of us to have some edification on what the city managers, I'm sorry to directly call, call you, but what the city manager's powers are in relation to that. Given my understanding of the situation here, you know, I think we have to extend the effective date. There are still some rules that are being written. I do, maybe, Council Rugge, this ordinance, unlike the plastic bag ban, the plastic bag ban was completely enforced by the city. This ordinance allows for a private course of action, I don't know if that's the correct term, but, you know, for someone to directly go to the courts for enforcement. So how does that interplay with what we're adopting here? We, now, are we prohibiting with this, by extending the effective date, are we prohibiting an employee from going to court if they feel that they, their rights have been violated under this ordinance?
Thank you, Councilmember Reed, yes. I, I would say that if the council votes to change the enforcement date here tonight, then it would prolong that period for individuals to bring a civil action until that January 1 effective date. I think that was an issue that City Manager Stowe and I ran into when we were looking at extending the date, and it's why we're here tonight to ask council for the extension.
Thank you. And then is, you know, so essentially, we're amending the ordinance by changing the effective date, and so is it appropriate to amend an ordinance by resolution?
Well, you're amending one of the clauses of the ordinance by resolution, so that is appropriate. If we were amending the substance of the ordinance that would go in the city code, that would be done by another ordinance.
Okay. Effectively, this is a policy change, right? Because it, you know, there are people who could have, you know, workers who could have read that ordinance and assumed as of, I'm sorry, what was the original effective date? September 1st. That as of September 1st, they would have had certain rights, you know, if they'd read that ordinance. So this is a policy change, and our, our rules require that policy changes go through the, I mean, one, would you agree that this is a policy change, that somebody who looked at this and thought, September 1st, I have rights, that now they potentially won't have? Does that seem to rise to the level of a policy change to you?
I think because it's related to the prior policy that was recently passed, it goes along with that, and it coincides with it. So I, I think it's tied into the policy that was already implemented. In a situation like this, it's an ongoing policy, not necessarily a new policy change that, that's come about. So I think that's why staff wanted to bring it. And then also because the implementation date was September 1st, there was some urgency to the matter.
And what hap, and last question here, what happens with someone who, so we're taking official action tonight. On September 4th, there is a worker who thought that they had rights on September 4th, and now on September 11th, the council is now passing this extension. So what happens to someone who had a claim within September 1st and September 11th?
I guess I'm not sure. That would be up for the court to decide.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Harris?
Thank you. I think we have to think about this before we pass laws and create them, not after the fact. And we ran into this in one of my stores was affected last week where, or last meeting where we made a law, and then we changed it in the middle of the date. So I am in favor of this. This is actually, came about because my store, who gave away $24,000 worth of bags, and then we changed our policy, wanted clarity that we could not provide on a legal level to them on what some of the changes would be. So I'm in favor of changing this, and I hope that my colleagues will do the same if you're in favor of businesses staying here. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the roll?
Sorry, I don't have a light. My apologies.
No one is seeking to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Reed with 55 seconds left.
My apologies, I just heard new, so can someone explain what the reasoning for this was? I heard that Councilmember Harris just shared that it was brought about because of maybe a business in her ward. Is that, were you discussing the fair work week ordinance or the plastic bag?
So I think when we met with that business, it was discussing both ordinances, but I believe that, well, they had questions on both ordinances, but many businesses have reached out to the city with questions on fair work week.
Allison Leipzig, our policy coordinator, good evening. No, I mean, this is not because of one particular business at all. I have never had a conversation with, and valued particularly about this. This is as a, as a grace period in general, so that we can get rules and regulations out to everybody. A lot of... A lot of, basically every city that's done a Fair Work Week ordinance has granted a grace period. So they've put the ordinance in effect and then given a grace period so that people can be working towards it, but, you know, they're not, especially if there's like tech that they use to, you know, track their employees' hours or whatever. The difference with ours is that because there's the private right of action that can push enforcement, that's really the biggest difference. Instead of just shifting enforcement as a grace period, that's why we wanted to shift the effective date. That's the difference.
And thank you. And then, we passed, I'm forgetting how long ago we passed this ordinance, but we passed this ordinance-
Late May.
Late May, and we gave how many months between May and now for folks, you know, four or five months? What is, oh, now my light's working. All right. I'm not muted anymore. So-
For the record-
My time is up?
It was my fault.
Oh, okay. So what is, do you recall what a standard, you know, so from passage to the ordinance taking effect, what a standard period is?
I don't know what others have done for a grace period.
Okay.
I mean, what I'll just say is that they, a grace period usually is the time between when it goes into effect and when there's enforcement, and what we're essentially doing is getting rid of a grace period and just pushing when it goes into effect.
Thank you. And I want to highlight what Councilmember Harris pointed out, which was that, you know, we need to look at some of this stuff upfront. I think, you know, sometimes we delay ordinances so long and have such a long discussion on it that, you know, that implementation date gets moved closer and closer because we're holding things and tabling things and sending it back to committee and not updating. And so I think we do have to be aware of that and really, you know, at least give a six-month period between the passage of an ordinance and its implementation date. And so I think we do have to be more mindful of that. And as we discuss things like an increase in the minimum wage and other ordinances, I, as the sponsor of some of those things, will ensure that we have at least six months if this council will pass those things between passage and implementation.
And now your time really is-
Now, my time is up. Thank you.
Again, no one's asking to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Harris with four minutes left.
I just want to call the question.
If you withdraw that, I think no one else is speaking, and we can, we can take a pass on the vote on that and just vote.
Thank you.
Will the clerk please take the role? And again, this is, to be clear, on the underlying resolution, on Resolution 53-R-23.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda-Cadiz?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and Resolution 53-R-23 is passed. Would someone care to make a motion relative to R-1?
I would like to move R-1, Ordinance 56-023, adding Title I, Chapter 13, Section 5, Small Donor Matching System for Fair Elections.
Second. Councilmember Hadda-Cadiz moves passage of ordinance 59-0-23. Councilmember Reed seconds. Councilmember Hadda-Cadiz, followed by Reed.
So if, I'd like to thank my colleagues who met with me over the last, it's been almost two months since we've had rules, who've meant to go over some of the small changes that have been outlined in the memo. For that reason, I would like to make an amendment to, I think, the correct procedure, to gut and replace the ordinance that we passed from rules with the outlined changes and ordinance that is in the memo. We have, we can go over, there was changes to, to reference ranked choice voting, the qualifying period. There's some budget numbers that were clarified based on our increase in budget. This has been in the works for a while, so there's some changes that needed to be made there. So I would like to make that amendment, and I think we all have it in writing because it's in the memo, so.
I will second that motion.
Councilmember Hadda-Cadiz moves to amend Ordinance 56-0-23 with precisely the language that was described in the packet. Councilmember Newsma seconds. Is there, there's one person in line to speak. Are you in line to speak about the amendment or the underlying question?
Yeah.
Okay. So seeing no further discussion on the amendment, would the clerk please take the role on the motion to-
I'm sorry, actually. I do have one question. Can you highlight some of the changes with the, with the gut and replace?
Page 198 of our packet.
I know. I'm asking. It can be highlighted verbally.
So one of the things is it, there was an assumption that ranked choice voting would be in place. We changed the language back to clarify, just for, in case that did not happen. So that's the first part. There was, when we first started, I think our, the exact, let me pull this up, the exact budget number was 1/40th of the budget was how we, 1/40th of 1%. And so because of some large capital projects based on our water plant, that would have, that number did not work anymore, so we made changes to there. The qualifying period, I think there was some concern about incumbents having more of an advantage by having their entire term to collect qualifying signatures. Overall, there are 10 clarifications. It's all on page 2 of 36, if you're looking at the actual memo.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, we're about to vote on the amendment?
That will be the next vote, yes.
Okay. So then I'll comment after. I had a comment about the overall question.
Would the clerk please take the role on the, on the motion to amend 56-0-23?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda-Cadiz?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
With six voting in favor and zero voting against, the motion carries and the amendment is adopted. So now, discussion continues, beginning with Councilmember Kelly.
So this is a question, I don't know if it's necessary, but, so we allocate, it's about $120,000 every four years, right, or 118. So if that, do we need, does it need to state in here if that's not spent? It doesn't, I mean, we don't continue to allocate every four years if, I'm just wondering if that needs to be stated in here. Otherwise, we would automatically allocate every four years $120,000.
So, from my understanding, is it, we are allocating, is it 64 or 68? Let's get that. But it would be every year, we can make the decision going forward if, for some reason, we end up not having people spend that money, we don't have to allocate that.
Well, that's just what I'm wondering if that, well, it's plus the legal fees, right? The legal, the 50, 50,000 for legal assistance in implementing it? So it's about 100 and, did I get my numbers wrong? About 118.
Well, it's 50 every four years, so that gets prorated for every four years.
Right, for this particular ordinance, correct? It's 50,000 allocated for the allocation of the 68,000 or 64. So I'm just asking, I just want to make sure that we allocate this, if it doesn't get touched, we don't allocate it again. We, that carries over to the next four years.
And we have- Ms. Kaplan, do you want to speak to this?
No, it sounds like, I mean, obviously, the council can make the choice to allocate or not allocate as they see fit.
Right. I guess my question is, does it need to be in here? So if we allocate funds, that it just kind of goes into if it's being allocated, does this mean, I'm just asking for clarification. Do we need to state that if the money's not spent, that we just maintain that balance as opposed to allocation every four years or whatever, prorated over?
The allocation is actually annual.
I understand it's divvied up by four, so this particular cycle will spend, will pay for it in two years.
Right. Right, there is a provision in 11353(c) that the city council may suspend or reduce the, if they, they, by adoption of an ordinance, can make an official declaration of fiscal emergency and suspend or reduce the amount of the annual appropriation.
Just, I think the question, I think there's a policy question which is being asked, which is the, you could imagine a situation, and not that I have any stake in this, but hypothetically imagine there's an uncontested mayor's race in 2025 and 2029 and 2033, and the question is, do you want to continue depositing annually money into this fund and build up a sort of potentially unlimited balance? Or is there some ceiling at which you want to just stop the allocation because you just don't need that much or you don't, you don't want, that's sort of an inappropriate thing? So is that the question?
Thank you. That's exactly it. And I mean, I would say that we keep a balance, like this is the balance that we want to have, and then we could always readjust it if we find that, wow, it's really popular and we're going right through it. But I just wouldn't want to see, I mean, I know we're talking four, eight, 12 years, but, you know, just this fun, reserve fund that's sitting there of taxpayer money, if we're not tapping into it, I would say to keep a balance, but I don't know how you put that into an ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, I think the city council can address that if it comes up. I don't know that it has to be in this particular ordinance right now, but it could be, I suppose. You could set a target amount, and you'd have to change it periodically.
Well, I guess the question I would ask at someone who hasn't read the fine print, I mean, I know the program design in other cities, but I haven't read the fine print. Do you know if this kind of provision exists in like New York law or Denver law or whatever?
No, I think it's adjusted periodically, like the ordinance, the city councils generally take a look at the ordinance every few years or every couple of years and see if anything needs to be adjusted. These programs are generally fine-tuned fairly regularly.
Okay. I understand that. So I'm not even saying like we need to reduce or increase the amount. I'm just saying this, this amount isn't automatically allocated every four years. I would say this amount, this is the amount allocated, provided it's depleted. As opposed to, I mean, it could go on endlessly.
Again, I think, I think that's something you could do here, but you could also do it through different avenues.
Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to speak to this point and call everyone's attention to page 210 of 468 of our packet. It's page 14 of 36 of this item. This is Section 11359, adjusting provisions, and I think this, this is what I think Ms. Kaplan was referring us to. That reads, "The Evanston City Council shall review the amounts and numbers of required initial qualifying contributions, the ratio of matching funds, the additional limits in contributions, and the limits on overall contributions and expenditures in the six-month period following each consolidated election to determine if they shall stay the same or be increased for the next consolidated election." So I think with that language in there, that obligates this council, future, well, future councils, to have a periodic look at this program, and we can make the call at that time. So I-
Thank you. Yeah, that's great. Thank you very much.
My reading of that language, I think sufficiently addresses Councilmember Kelly's question.
Thank you.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Reed with four minutes left.
Thank you. I shared a number of concerns that I had with this ordinance at Rules Committee. I don't know if there are any answers that were gathered, particularly on our ability to only match funds for low-income residents rather than, you know, all residents. I think that this has the potential, particularly in Evanston, we are not New York, to only further exacerb, to further increase the power that our already wealthier donors have. So I certainly would like an answer either from our law department, you know, this is only for introductions, it'll be back at our next meeting, or from the advocates, if there's clear case law on that. I know you shared an opinion last time, but I don't know if you ever sent me the, any case law to back that up. And then, oh, go ahead if you want to respond to that.
Sure. I'd be happy to look.
Could you please introduce yourself for the record?
Certainly. My name's David Melton. I'm chairman of the Board of Reform for Illinois. I don't, I didn't understand our discussion last time to be a request for actual research on that. I could do the research on that. I doubt that there is much directly on point, but I think that you would find that there is a lot of things from which you could argue by analogy, that would say that that's unconstitutional.
Sure, and I'm prepared to read those cases and find the through lines if they're. So I'd appreciate if-
If you would like, I will prepare a memo to that effect.
Thank you, thank you. And then, a few specific questions, you actually might be well-prepared to answer these. I hate to use myself as a hypothetical, but let's use myself as a hypothetical. Or no, let's not, because I'm, let's say there's some candidate who is not a, the most ethical candidate, and they decide to run for mayor, and they, you know, use the system, the small donor matching system, they get on the ballot and they decide to withdraw their name from consideration for mayor. Is there a provision in this ordinance that requires them to return those funds?
Yes. Well, there's a provision in the ordinance, not in that, but to require them to return all their funds. There's a provision in the ordinance requiring basically that unpaid, that funds that are paid out under the program that aren't used be repaid to the city, and there's a proportional formula for calculating that, which is toward the end of the ordinance. I don't have the exact section number in front of me.
And then, I'm curious, you know, if, am I, as a candidate, would a candidate be able to let donors know, hey, if you donate up to the full dollar amount or whatever can be matched nine times, I'm going to return your contribution and just keep the matched funds? Would that be allowed under this ordinance?
I don't believe so. It might require a court case to determine that, but I believe that that would be an abuse of the program, and a court would still find.
Why do you think it would be an abuse of the program?
Just because the way you've described it is a scheme to basically undermine the purpose of the program by getting funds for a purpose other than actually using them.
No, no. In this second scenario, the person is running for office, they're looking to run for mayor, they're just looking to, you know, get money.
Well, if you're saying, can they return the qualifying contribution, I would say that's an abuse of the program, if they return the qualifying contribution to keep the, the matching funds. And I'd say that would be, that would show up in an audit and would be questioned probably by the city and would result in litigation with the finding that that was an abuse.
Is there anything in the ordinance that explicitly says that's an abuse that you know of?
I can't think of anything in the ordinance that explicitly says what all the abuses are that are possible. No.
Okay. And how many contributions does someone have to have in order to qualify for the program?
100. I believe it was 100.
100 contributions. How many, do we know how many of the mayoral candidates in the last race or in the last few races received more than 100 individual contributions?
I would guess that all of them did.
I would, I mean, I'm happy to, to answer that question as regards one of them, but I would guess that information-
I'm sure one of them received-
I would guess that information's not public because it would be, you would, a candidate would likely hit that threshold through unitemized contributions.
Correct. Right. They, under the state law, they don't have to be itemized under 150.
Yes. Okay. Why did we pick 100 contributions as the threshold?
It seemed like the appropriate number. The point, the purpose behind that is to gauge whether a candidate has substantial public support or not, and that was why that number is chosen as, as an appropriate number, given the number of voters in the city and number of voters for mayor and so on, as an appropriate standard for saying this is, this is a serious candidate as opposed to a gadfly candidate who's maybe expecting to get one or two votes.
Okay. And is there, those contributions could be a dollar, 25 cents?
Actually, I think the contribution bottom is $5.
Is $5 for it to qualify as one of the 100.
Correct.
Okay. I, there, thank you. Thank you very much.
Sure.
I'm someone who tries to get to yes on, you know, this is generally- I'm someone who tries to get to yes on, you know, this is generally seen as progressive policy. I have concerns in the way that this particular ordinance was designed that, my focus with, you know, particularly using taxpayer money to support campaigns is to make sure that we're doing it in the most equitable way possible. And I just have real concerns, and we'll see after this election, all of this can be amended at some later point, but I have real concerns that this will not lead to an increase in particularly the number of low propensity voters participating in our electoral system. And it will in fact give donors who have traditionally participated in our system even more power. And it will be supported and subsidized by low-income voters, particularly since this is only going to be used for the mayoral race and not in wards that have, you know, large, low-income or, you know, disenfranchised populations. Doesn't have to be race-based or minority, but certainly low-income or, you know, communities that have been disenfranchised. It also, I'm, I'm not clear on the fact that we couldn't limit the use of these funds to folks who are low-income or meet some threshold, you know, not necessarily low, maybe lower moderate income or low propensity voters or come from challenged areas. You know, those kinds of, kinds of things would make me a lot more comfortable with this. You know, a voucher program, there, there are other ways that I think we could, you know, create a fairer electoral system without subsidizing the contributions of potentially wealthy folks. Because certainly there will be folks of means who donate up to that amount, get their contributions matched nine times, and that will take money away from our efforts to help homeless folks, from our efforts to, you know, to do a lot of other work that we're doing here in the city and just make the voices of wealthier people even greater without it actually having to impact their pocketbook. So for today, I'm voting no. There's still time to have a conversation. I don't think my low-income vote matters here. But I, I do want us to be, you know, we, to be more intentional here with this. And so I, I hope that folks, if we get back in fact, that we could limit this only to lower or moderate income folks or to certain disenfranchised areas and match their funds nine times. I hope that folks would be willing to consider that if that is legally acceptable. It'll save us some money for taxpayers and it'll actually help us increase the number, increase participation amongst the folks that I think we really desperately need to increase participation in, in local elections. And so I'm sure my time is coming to an end, so I will close here. And for today, I'm voting no. I didn't get an opportunity to meet with you over the last two months, but maybe we can meet on this over the next couple of weeks and, yes.
So your time is up and I'm done. Way past up. I just, I, I don't want to get involved in a back and forth. I do want to make, I want to respond to one point you made because I think it's an important question and I think there's a very clear answer to it. In the world that's been described where every contribution must be matched equally for an equal protection reason, the world that we, that the, we've been told we probably live in now, which is why the ordinance says what it says, in that world, the maximum contribution with all the matching is a tiny fraction of today's maximum contribution. So if you're talking about the influence of the wealthiest donors, it will still be a fraction under this system because their contributions will be limited to something like, you know, a fifth or a fourth of what it is right now. So I just think it's important for us to keep that in mind as we contemplate this policy. With that, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Hara Kharis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
With five voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries. An ordinance 56-0-23, as just amended, is passed for introduction. It will be back on the agenda in 15 days, Tuesday, September 26th, for action. This brings us to item FB2, which is an item for discussion. Would someone care to make a motion to facilitate that discussion?
I will move item FB2, fiscal year 2023, mid-year financial report.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves that we have, that we discussed the mid-year financial report. Councilmember Newsma, seconds. I believe on this issue, we have a presentation from our chief financial officer.
Good evening, Mayor, the members of the council. Every year we do it right before we kick off the budget process, kind of media financials presentation to the city council, where we are, how we are doing, our projections for the year end. And that gives a kind of a good idea for the city council before we kind of roughly after a month, on October 6th, we will come out with the proposed budget for the next year. So I'll just go to the first couple of items. Yeah, right there, it's good. This is the kind of summary where we are, in particular, the general fund. The revenue is right on track at 52% of our budget, at $66 million through the June. And we have taken the Junes, which is like a halfway point through the year. The expenses are at 54% of the budget, so year-to-date net is a $2.5 million deficit. Fund balance as of June is around $55 million, which is 43% of the budgeted expenses. General fund revenues, just a kind of a real high-level trend. Sales tax, home rule sales tax are trending a little high, continues to be the same trend, I think, from the very beginning of the month, from the year. Personal property tax, replacement taxes, they are expected to go down and will continue to keep on track because it changes with each month or the, I mean, we get eight payments in the year. Real estate transfer taxes, they are down 29% compared to the 22 actuals through July. And obviously, the one thing which came up at the first $3 million is going to go to the reparations fund, so. And then there are other several local revenues, our home rule taxes, including the recreation program fees, building permit fees, tickets, fines and all those things are there kind of on, you know, meet or exceed our expectations. Then we have the numbers here. I mean, I would ask Clayton Black, our budget manager, to go into the details. And I would request the city council, if they can wait for any question after we have shown all this slide, so we will answer any and all questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Hitesh. Clayton Black, budget manager. So as Hitesh said, what we're showing here are our revenue projections for this fiscal year. We've offered a low projection and a high projection based on the trends that he mentioned. As you can see, we're projecting revenues to finish the year. If you scroll down just a notch, Allison, at a low end, our revenue should finish about $10 million over budget. And at the high end, we could see as much as $13 million in potential upside. The green are revenues that have exceeded what we set as the budget, while the handful in red are those that are under budget, that are likely to finish the year under budget. So that's, that's the great news. Revenues are trending extremely well. Many of the trends we saw last year, with the exception of a few revenues that Hitesh mentioned in the previous slide, are projected to finish this year at or above what our budget was. Next slide. When you look at the other side of the ledger for expenses, revenues stand to finish at $10 to $13 million over budget. The budget that was approved last year budgeted a net deficit of $10 million. So what that means is, is that by revenues finishing about $10 to $13 million over budget, that net deficit we budgeted of $10 million should be able to correct itself. And we're starting at a net zero budget with, with that overage in revenues. That said, the city council has approved a handful of things this year and a few other items tonight that will likely result in increased spending, items that were not budgeted. These include a handful of overages on capital improvement projects, as well as higher-than-budgeted wage increases in police. We budgeted a 4.5% wage increase, came in at up to 18% for our police officers in fire. I believe it was 11% was the increase that was approved. Again, we budgeted the 4.5%. The last couple of items on the list, while they say likely, are given tonight, very, very likely, and actually approved now. So one of those is our ASME contract. The numbers that are shown here are actually a little low compared to the contract that was ultimately approved. Obviously, we've not been able to kind of put numbers out there as, while that negotiation process has continued. But we do know that those are going to come in higher than budget and we'll work through what that number looks like. And during the ASME contract item, somebody else mentioned, I forget which council member it was, likely to see some non-union wage increases as well, so we'll stand to see what those look like. But those are not budgeted and would impact the FY23 year-end net deficit as well. Listed here are a handful of potential items that we have discussed at some point with the Finance and Budget Committee. All items, none of these have been approved by city council, but they're all good items that would help advance certain financial goals. One example is transferring some of the reserves to CIP fund balance, increasing our reserve balance policy to 20% instead of 16%, correcting fund deficit issues in our insurance fund and parking fund. But again, these have not been approved yet, but are ideas we discussed with Finance and Budget Committee. So this slide has a lot of numbers on it, but it sort of pulls together everything we've talked about so far in the general fund. If you look at the first line that's shown there with the arrow, it shows where we're projected to finish FY23. If our revenues finish on the low end, we would finish with a fund balance of $49 million, which would be $26 million above and beyond our reserve. And in the high end, we could finish as high as $52 million, which would be $29 million over our, our reserve. So that's all great news. Really good financial position that we're going to find ourselves in at the end of this year with, continue to have a nice, strong fund balance that exceeds our fund balance policy. But I get to the next slide to kind of talk about where we find ourselves moving into next year's budget. Revenues have likely peaked, given inflationary trends. As Hitesh mentioned, a handful of items that really powered our revenues in FY22 have, we've seen big decreases in '23. Other ones like sales taxes, home rule sales taxes, they remain high, continue to be pretty strong, but we've really seen, seen them peak this year. On the expense side, the contractual and non-union wage increases, we could be looking at in total about $10 million in additional wage increases compared to the budget that was approved for this year. So that's $10 million that we're going to have to figure out how to cover out of the general fund moving forward. Additionally, that number in the public safety pension contribution bullet point should be $5 million. But under the policy approved by city council, we're looking at about $5 million of additional contributions this year that will come from sources that were previously available for the general fund to use. Those have been reallocated to help achieve the pension goals of the city council, which means it's a $5 million hole that the general fund will have to figure out how to address. In the capital improvement fund, we didn't issue any bonds in '22 and '23, continue to draw on general fund reserves. We haven't issued bonds since August of '21. $26 million with the bonds that we budgeted in '22 and '23 have not been issued, so we've continued to draw on reserves to keep those capital projects moving forward. Additionally, equipment replacement plan. So pre-COVID, the general fund paid $2 million a year in order to purchase vehicles. With our ARPA relief funding the last two years, the general fund has had a break from covering the cost of vehicles. But with ARPA money running out, the general fund has to take that responsibility back on. And that's about $2 million a year that it hasn't been paying. And with the desire for electric vehicles, we know that the pre-COVID amount of $2 million may actually need to be a little bit higher than that in order to meet the, the CARP goals and purchase the electric vehicles that are desired. And finally, staffing. We're closer to full staffing than we were last year this time. Most departments, except police, which has continued to actually hire as well. And we've approved a handful of new positions, including the HR positions that were approved as part of tonight's consent agenda. I think there was a position in Parks and Recreation that was approved last month, and there's additional positions that are under consideration as well. So the slide at the end of the presentation goes into some of the specific numbers, but in total, with the items that are bullet pointed in this slide, you're looking, we're looking at about $20 million in increased expenses that were not in this year's budget that we're going to have to figure out how to be able to pay for as part of this budget. Slides nine through 11 here have the city's other 37 funds. Many of these have their own fund balance policy that's been set by city council. We could be here all night going through all 37 of them, but rather than do that, just wanted to highlight two key things. One being, we also pay for staff out of our human services, sewer, solid waste, water, and parking funds. And those funds and the staff in those funds have seen the contractual wage increases that I already spoke about. So those funds are going to face some challenges to make sure that they can cover the cost of employees as well. And then finally, only three of these funds are not meeting their reserve balance policy set by city council, those being the CIP fund, where we haven't issued the bonds and have drawn on the fund balance, the parking fund, and the insurance fund, although both of those funds have kind of powered back in the last couple of years and are on a decent enough trajectory moving forward. So that's kind of a high-level overview. We'll be here in October to present the budget. Over the next couple of weeks, we'd also like to meet with city council members and get, you know, reactions, thoughts, feedback as we face some, some big challenges moving into this year's budget that we hope we can address during this budget cycle. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much to both of you and your team for the presentation. We begin with councilmember Hara Kharis, followed by Kelly.
So I had one quick question about the real estate transfer tax. I know it's something that, you know, the money trickles in just based on sales of property. And do we see the shortfall being tied to interest rates and the real estate market being slow? And do you, is, do you guys see any projection about that, like picking up?
100% tied to the real estate market and the higher interest rates. We had a great buyer's market last year for most of the year, and that's why we surged really to record highs, and it's been impacted this year. The year-to-date at this point is 2.5 million, and at this point last year, we were at 3.9 million. So we're one, we're at like 66% of where we at, we're at last year at this point. And it really takes a couple of really high-dollar sales, which fortunately, last year, we had a couple of big ones in October and December to, and maybe we will this year too, but it's not something we can, we can count on.
Thank you. Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. Yeah, on that same note, and thank you for the presentation. Also, thank you for, it looks like we have a better projection of surplus budget this year, potentially close to 30 million in excess above reserves. So thank you for that. I appreciate that. I think that helps us figure out our budget and spend, have more clarity and accountability on how we spend our tax dollars. So on the transfer tax, I know we didn't budget $750,000, but that's what's listed under, and I know, and I understand that the first $3 million goes to the reparations fund, but I think revenue is revenue. And so it says for the 2023 budget, $750,000, and we've only, it says, you know, low projection, $350,000. And to your point, we're at 2.5 million now?
Correct.
So, so is there, I mean, what we actually budgeted though is far more than $750,000. So can you tell me how, so I, I understand that, but shouldn't that still be reflected there? And then so that, so that's if somebody looks at our budget and they want to get a realistic idea of revenue, and that is one of our top revenue sources, they can see that and there can be an asterisk that says, you know, so much will be transferred to the reparations fund.
Yeah, and Allison, I think it's slide, page number four, if you want to pull that up by chance, so I can speak to it. The revenues we've shown here are strictly general fund revenues. The general fund is really the lifeblood of any municipal budget. It's where we pay for most of our people. 78% of our salaries are out of the general fund. 37% of our overall city budget is in the general fund. $3 million that's been reallocated to the reparations program is not available to general fund operations. It's, it's strictly set aside for the reparations program. And the first $3 million that we get there do not help the picture in the general fund where we, where we face this current situation. So that's why we've chosen to only show the amounts that are available to the general fund on this particular.
So I mean, if somebody wanted to see, oh, how much are we getting in real estate transfer tax? A resident opened it up, how would they ever know how much has come in? I mean, we don't even have the amount we budgeted here. I just think that, I just think for clarity, I would ask that we put the full amount that we budgeted with an asterisk. I, do you transfer from the general fund? Do you transfer from the general fund?
Per the direction of City Council, or State Council, Corporation Council, we deposit the $3 million directly in the reparations fund, and it never passes through or touches the general fund.
Okay. Then somewhere we should have, then, I would say, because I know in our quarterly, in our monthly reports, if I look at our monthly reports, it has top revenue sources, and the property transfer tax is absolutely one of our top revenue sources, but it's not listed there because it's going into the reparations fund. I'm not arguing that, but I think we need to have some transparency for residents, so if they want to see, first, what was budgeted for property transfer tax represents a significant revenue, be able to identify actually what we budgeted and what we're getting, and the way it's, this, you know, I'm not, I'm not objecting to it going into the reparations fund, but I am objecting to the way it's presented in my budget.
Right. And so, Councilmember, we don't want to confuse the people, and so, and as I think Clayton touched on that, if we put it in real estate transfer tax as a revenue and then transfer out, that's confusing. Yes, what we can do is, we can, when we put out the monthly report, we can have one paragraph where it says, "Total revenues are this, first $3 million is going to say," so we are only reporting X dollar in the general fund, which is available for the general operation. But that's very important, that $3 million, I don't want the residents to be confused and say, "Okay, we have two and a half, or $3 million available in general fund." No, it's not available. So, but yeah, we can definitely put in-
But there's no way, I mean, there's just no way anybody could ever figure that out, what we budgeted, by looking at that, or looking at this to know what we budgeted and what we're getting for property transfer tax, because the way, if you're, you want to find, you see it listed there, and you see it like we budgeted $750,000, who would know that we actually budgeted a lot more? So-
Either note good enough in the monthly report.
But I think, right, or for example, on the monthly report, it has top, again, general fund revenues, and it has personal property tax, it says that we have budgeted $2.25 million, but in fact, we budgeted $605,000 more. How would I know that based on, I mean, how am I supposed to, where did that $605,000 go? You know, so it's not-
No, no, I get your point. I can, as I said, I can put a note or a table, which would say overall revenue, and then it would read by the fund, general fund, as well as the reparations fund.
Yeah, well, I think you have, I think, so for example, personal property replacement tax, it's listed on the general fund, but it's 600, what you've listed is short, $605,000. I think there should be an asterisk right next to it, and below there say, additional, I don't, where did that other $605,000, where does that go?
That is the pension fund.
And so there's another, so it's listed, so I think we need to have, if we're listing these, an asterisk, I would say right below, and the same with, I don't think we should have a blank space. Actually, we don't even list at all the real estate transfer tax in top general fund revenues, yet we'll get some, that should at least be listed, what we budgeted, you know, what goes into reparations and what we're collecting, otherwise nobody, because that is absolutely a top revenue, it generates far more than about-
So let's do that, what we'll do is, we'll try to come up and see if you like it, we'll come up with some table, which is kind of a self-explanatory, to what is the total, what is going in the general fund, and what is going in the other fund.
Great, thank you, that would be great.
Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. So just want to, I want to highlight a few things here. So one, with property taxes, I mean, I know we're looking at only the general fund here, but we bring in about $50 million annually with property taxes between-
Total levy is around $55 million.
On $55 million, and we have a $400 million budget, right? Or at least last year, it was $400 million.
This includes everything, general, library included.
Right, right. And so, you know, I think a lot of times, you know, I think it's important to remind folks how, you know, it's a significant source of revenue, obviously, but in the grand scheme, it's not even the largest source of revenue. A lot of folks think, "My property taxes entitle me to this or that," and, I mean, we spend, between police and fire, we spend more than-
$25 million.
Between the two of them.
So that's a good point, Councilmember Reed, that out of even $55 million, roughly only $10 million or $11 goes into general fund.
Yeah.
Out of $130 million or $25 million budget. So it's, yeah, mainly it is for the debt service fund and both the pension funds, and the library is a big one too, yes.
Yes. And, you know, the combined sales taxes, and this doesn't even include all of the, you know, there's the hotel, or I don't know, do I say it up there, the hotel motel tax, there's all kinds of sales taxes, and when you combine all of those together, that far outpaces, you know, all of the property taxes that are generated. And also, you know, very clearly, the state income tax is a significant source of revenue, and that's, we get a share back of all of the income that is produced here, we get a share of that, and so, just note that.
Not income produced here, it is based on population.
Well, not, yeah, on the people who, yeah.
Per capita, no, no, it is based on population.
Oh, okay. It's just purely based on population, all right, well then I was mistaken there, and I'm glad you cut in before I tried to make my next point. So, you know, you know, I think it's important for us to keep that in mind and to, you know, for our residents to understand the complexity of how we piece together, you know, our finances here. And one thing that I would love us to do is, you know, we have implemented a number of, you know, policies such as the plastic bag ban and other things, and, you know, a lot of folks are, you know, yelling, "Woe is me, I'm going to start shopping in Will Matter, Skokie, or somewhere else because of that." And we have a clear metric to check, to see if that's true. You know, I know a lot of folks who, you know, live across the border in Chicago, and they tell me every time they come here, they give me a swear word when they have to pay the bag tax, but they still come here from over the border and other cities. And so, you know, I, one thing I would love for us to, you know, closely track, and it's not a one-to-one, there are plenty of other influences, but I'd love for us to pay close attention to sales tax and how potentially, you know, policies that we are implementing, if there is an impact on that, and I know some of, most of them are pretty new, but I'd be interested in that, you know, after, after a year. And, you know, I would, you know, continue to encourage us to look at a number of our services as enterprise funds. So for example, our parking, we have a parking enterprise fund, but we also generate revenue for our general fund through parking. And I think there are a number of services that the city provides that we could look at, you know, kind of packaged together, similar to the way we look at the parking enterprise, our water enterprise, our solid waste enterprise, and it would give us better metrics for, you know, how we are both allocating funds to that particular service and the revenue that's being generated by that service. I think about, for example, our fire department. Yes, we don't look at our fire department as a revenue generating source, but our fire department generates revenue with, you know, with ambulance services to the tune of $2 million?
Ambulance is, yeah.
And it's about $1 million per ambulance, right, that we, you know, if we added a new ambulance, we'd bring in about a million new dollars in revenue, is that correct?
Not necessarily.
Oh, okay, please, please let me-
But yes, so right now, we generate a little over $2 million in ambulance revenues.
And how many ambulances do we have in service? I think the Chief Polup was here. I think we have two ambulances. We now have three, but in the, so are we, are your numbers being adjusted for this third ambulance, are we?
We'll have to see the first-year trend, because it doesn't necessarily pro-rate you all that way.
Yeah, yeah.
We have to see the number of calls and whatnot.
Okay. And sometimes we lend our ambulances to other communities if needed, which also generates revenue for us? Yes, no? It's a rare circumstance, okay. So, you know, I would just, I would love for us, I know Finance and Budget Committee exists, I'm on Finance and Budget, and we, I don't think we've had the opportunity to get, you know, this granular with a number of things, but, you know, whether it come to, whether it be our facilities, I think our facilities need to be seen as an enterprise fund, because we have unfunded liabilities there. And I also think we need to start calculating what our unfunded liabilities are with our social safety net, whether that be providing affordable housing or, you know, other services that our low-income residents need. And I think if we don't know or have some kind of North Star about what that number is, what we're not putting into the system, and what we believe we should be, we're going to continue to fall short. And so I'd love for us to start creating a, you know, a dollar amount, a metric for us to track as we're, as we're moving toward that. My time is very likely up. All right, thank you.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Kelly with a minute, 10 seconds left.
Thank you. And I don't expect you to have this number, but I, so we focus on the general fund, and again, thank you, if you can, for bringing more clarity to those, to the, to the real estate transfer tax, as well as to the PPRT, so that, so that we can see actually what we budgeted and what we've received. And then, in addition, I know we, we have, we have reserves for, I think, 11 different funds. We have the council set some at 16%, some at, you know, like motor fuel taxes, 25%. Do you know off the top of your head, I know like the general fund, it's about $19 million, that's 16.6, I think in the reserve that we budget, do you know total with reserves for all those, like what the total amount is that we budget for reserves, if you were to add that all up? And again, I don't expect you to have that number on hand, but-
And unfortunately not, and it doesn't work that way, because each fund is a separate set of accounts. So I cannot merge all, say, "Okay, we have $50 million in reserves, which I can use anywhere." As I mentioned, we have discussed these at-
No, I'm not, no, I don't mean, I just mean total, I'm not saying how we spend it, but I know, you know, I have the list, I don't have it with me, of the 11, and how much, what percent we budget for reserves in each one of those accounts, and I'm just wondering, so for example, the general fund being the largest, at about $19 million, what, altogether, what-
Some of the numbers, where, yeah, we have the slide towards the end, right, where we show the fund balance, and we talk about it, what is required versus what is excess, I think.
If you look at slides nine through 11 of the presentation, if you, Allison can scroll up to just page nine. If you go up, one more, right there. So the only fund listed here that has a reserve balance policy is the motor fuel tax fund. And you can see there, the required fund balance for that one is, my eyes are not going to cooperate, $1 million, $1,35,400, so that's the required fund balance in that fund. The fund has a balance of $6.281,000, which means of that amount, the $5,246,210 you see in the far-right column is considered excess above and beyond what's required in that fund. The motor fuel tax fund is a difficult one, because it is heavily regulated by the state, we're audited each year on how we spend the money, and we have to demonstrate that it's spent on road projects, projects that relate to transportation.
But I'm looking at our fund reserve policy, and I see for general fund, it's 16.6, parking system fund, 16.6, water fund, 16.6, sewer fund, same, solid waste fund, 16.6, motor fuel tax, 25, capital improvement fund, 25, these are all reserves that we budget for. So it's more than just the motor fuel tax.
I walk through just the motor fuel tax in my example, but if you look at page 10, you can see, these are debt service funds, none of those you mentioned, but if you scroll down to page 11, then it shows the capital improvement fund, parking, sewer, solid waste, water, and insurance, and the reserve balance amounts required in those funds, along with the current fund balance as of the end of June, and the amount in the far-right column that is above or below what the City Council has set that reserve policy at.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I mean, I'll go through and do the math. I just wondered, I think for the public to know how much we set aside total, again, 19 point something in the general, plus all these other funds, it would be, I think it's just a useful number to have. Thank you.
No one else is seeking to speak, so let me just thank you guys very much for this presentation, which I think is really, really important. You know, a year ago, when we were talking about the budget, I said, you know, we've got a really, really excellent cash position and a lot of challenges coming ahead. And on some level, the same could be said today, except that it's even more obvious, the extent of the upcoming challenges. As an aside, I would argue we shouldn't be particularly surprised. The main, the most significant change in our anticipated expenditures this year was in the employee contracts, which, given the labor market and the inflation that we're experiencing, I think was entirely predictable. We're now entering into budget season. Next week, we're going to have a budget discussion here. We'll continue to have those during the course of the next few months. You heard that the Finance Department's going to be reaching out to everybody and asking to meet to talk about budgetary priorities, and I would certainly urge everyone to take advantage of that opportunity. For all the good news in here, there's really sobering stuff as well. And so I think we're going to, I would say that as I contemplate what kind of budget I can support, I think we're going to need to be cautious. I think we're going to be very, very restrained as we look at, for instance, expansion of headcounts and other, taking out of other obligations, particularly long-term obligations. And I just think, in general, even outside the context of the individual, of the annual budget discussion, as a body, we're going to have to be really, really careful in analyzing both potential new expenditures, as well as potential new revenues, especially potential new expansions of the tax base. And I think that's going to be difficult for all of us, but it's absolutely necessary if we want to, notwithstanding the upcoming challenges, leverage the assets we have to find ourselves in a long-term, healthy position. So I just, I appreciate you kind of laying this out for us, because I think it makes very clear for us now, as opposed to a month and a half from now, how serious the work that awaits us is, and quite frankly, how hard the decisions that we're going to have to make are, and I certainly commit to work with you guys to ensure that we make those decisions as opposed to kicking them down the road, because I don't think that's going to help anybody. Thank you again.
Thank you.
That brings us now to item AP2. No, that was the other FB. This is for discussion only. This brings us now to item AP2. I'm going to just, I'm going to try to be really, really quick here, but I want to explain kind of what's going on.
Point of order.
Councilmember Reed?
Motion might be in order first, before you explain what's going on?
Well, I was going to explain why I was going to ask for the motion I was asking for, but the motion, the motion that I'm asking for is a suspension of the rules.
It's a debatable motion, so I just think the motion should be on the floor.
All right. Would anyone care to suspend, move to suspend City Council Rule 5.2? Is there a second? Councilmember Revelle moves to suspend City Council Rule 5.2, which would enable us to then approve this reappointment. Councilmember Wynn seconds. Councilmember Reed?
No.
So let me just explain why we're here, because I know I've heard from a few different people, different things that are, I think, reflect some confusion. I have been involved in an ongoing process, some visible, some not, to kind of modernize the appointment process. I want to give a big shout-out to the Clerk's office, not only Deputy Clerk Sheikh, but also Deputy Clerk Rodriguez and Clerk Mendoza have done a lot, a lot, to help with this, so thank you guys. You deserve a lion's share of the credit of the progress that's been made. To be frank, when I took office, it was customary for reappointments to happen essentially as staff initiatives without, without mayoral involvement at all. And it, I think, was also customary for those reappointments to violate Rule 5.2 and for people to be appointed to numerous terms beyond what the term limit allows. We're not done, I would say, addressing these issues, but we've, we've made a great deal of progress. During the course of the last few years, I think there have been instances where just because we were in a hurry to do reappointments, and everyone was happy with the people on the, on the committee or board or commission in question, we just went along and reappointed somebody, and then you all unanimously voted on the consent agenda to approve someone who is actually being reappointed in violation of the rules. It's my view that if we have a rule, we should follow it, and so when it was brought to my attention that we were sometimes violating that rule, I asked that we stop doing that. I think that Mr. Schoenfeld has been a really important participant in this committee. I think it would be totally unnecessary and unhelpful to boot him from the committee because of a rule that he wasn't thinking about, and I wasn't thinking about as recently as when we discussed reappointing him, so I'm asking you all to approve suspension of the rules so that we can reappoint him and he can continue serving the community. And there may be one or two other reappointments kind of in the pipeline like that, that have already been kind of discussed, that may require me to come back to you in the next meeting or two to request a rule suspension like that. But I'm, my commitment to you is that we're going to stop doing that by accident shortly, and, you know, perhaps, you know, if we come back to you in the future, asking for a rule suspension like this, it's not going to be a- for a rule suspension like this, it's not going to be like, oh, we didn't think about it. It's going to be, this is a person who ought to be serving for a duration beyond the provided for two terms for some specific reason, and then I'll explain the reason, and we'll move on from there. So I'm sorry for the long explanation, but that's, I know it looks kind of weird to have this separated out from the others, but, but I both think that it's important that we follow the rule and not sort of sweep things under the rug because no one would notice, but I also think it'd be really beneficial to the city to just let this appointment occur, and so if you all are willing, I would request affirmative vote for the rule suspension, and then after that, a vote to approve Ms. Schoenfeld. Seeing no further discussion with the Clerk...
Oh, no, I have my light on.
Sorry. Councilmember Reed?
Yes. I am uncomfortable with, I, I think the proper procedure would be to just change the rule, because then, you know, and, and this, I don't even know Mr. Schoenfeld. The first time I heard his name was when, with the lawsuit, and he won, so he obviously was right about something. But my concern is just the perception of fairness. There are people who are going to be on all kinds of committees who add a lot of value to their committee and may want to be reappointed, and what are we going to tell them? That you're not, we don't see you as worthy enough to violate the rule and to suspend the rule for you, you know, because you didn't file successful litigation, or, you know, what is, I, I just, I, I think, I think the proper procedure would be to just amend the rule. I don't, you know, there are two terms, Councilmember Wynn, years ago, when we were, when I, in 2016, when we were running for Clerk, there was a discussion about, you know, should term limits just be two terms, or what is the magic number? And, you know, I, I can't say that two is the magic number. So I think there could be more thought around how many terms someone is allowed to serve. But I think suspending the rule in certain circumstances, particularly, you know, it's one thing to suspend the rule for us, for things up here, you know, a rule about things having to be voted on in two meetings versus one, but when it comes to an individual and someone who has dedicated their effort and their time away from children and family to the community, and they're, someone's seeking to do that more, and then with some folks will say, nope, there's a rule, you can't be reappointed, and others, you know, we think your work is valuable enough to, to, to continue on, I, I just don't know if that leaves the best taste in folks' mouths. And so I'm going to have to vote no to suspending the rules. And I would suggest, and in the past, you know, there's no hard and fast rule that says, at least that I understand, because we've done this on other committees, where someone's term has expired, and we've allowed them to not be reappointed but stay on until we find a replacement. You know, I don't know when Mr. Schoenfeld's term is up, but, you know, there may be enough time for us to just make an amendment to the rule versus moving to violate the rule in this instance. And so I, I would be happy to go down that route, and then I'd be happy to vote for Mr. Schoenfeld to keep him on. But I also want to note that, you know, there are a number of committees where we, you know, I don't, I hope we didn't vote on tonight, but, you know, I've read that, you know, for example, with Land Use Commission, that we're going to just reappoint members, and there have been calls for diversity on the Land Use Commission. So in some places, I think, you know, the term limit does serve us, and it gives us an opportunity to get fresh ideas and, you know, fresh folks on committees, and, and we have a lot of talent in this community, and there, I'm sure there are other David Schoenfelds out there who could, you know, serve in this capacity. So, you know, either, either we keep the rule or we get rid of the rule. I can't vote yes today to suspend this particular rule, because I, I just don't think it's fair.
Will the Clerk please take the role on the motion to suspend the rule?
Councilmember Wynn? Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Harald Karis?
I abstain.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
With four voting in favor, one voting against, and one abstention, the two-thirds majority is achieved, and the rule is suspended. Now, would someone care to make a motion to confirm the reappointment of Mr. Schoenfeld to the NU City Committee?
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves approval of the reappointment of Mr. Schoenfeld to the NU City Committee. Councilmember Wynn, seconds. Councilmember Reed, followed by Revelle.
I'm gonna, short of this rule being changed, Mr. Schoenfeld, or, you know, anybody watching, I don't know who you are, you're probably a fine person, not voting no personally against you, or, but, you know, I just want to make that clear, I'm going to be voting no, just because I think we need a consistent application of a rule that deals with the way residents are allowed to or not allowed to contribute to the city. But if someone's willing to make an amendment or co-sponsor some change to Rule 5.2, I'm happy to do that. I think we need to put more thought into, you know, whether folks are only allowed to want a reappointment. And we'll say, I've had conversations with colleagues where they've wanted to use this rule to get people off of committees in the past, and, you know, I just believe in a consistent application of the rules, whether it's for someone that I love, or it's someone that I don't know, or someone that I don't like. So, thank you.
Councilmember Revelle?
Well, I'm sympathetic to Councilmember Reed's point. So if, if we approve Mr. Schoenfeld's reappointment, is that for a four-year term? What are, what is the idea? And I guess, so, but he's been on the, he's been on the committee for 20 years. I mean, I, I guess my thought is, some committees benefit from having maybe no term limits. I mean, this committee probably benefits from having a couple of residents who are, have a long history with the committee and the issues, and, and so I'm, you know, quite happy to support Mr. Schoenfeld's reappointment, but it is troubling to, to, I don't know, it just, it's very strange.
If I can, and I know you're in line, I'll call you, but I, I'm also sympathetic to Councilmember Reed's point, and I also think it's, it's strange, just for the reasons you say. There's two things that I think make a yes vote here pretty important. The first is that I was unaware of this term limit and offered to reappoint him, and do not feel that it's, I don't want the city to be in a position of making offers like that and walking away from them, and that's on me, but it's still what happened. The other thing, is it, I mean, let's just, like, pull the, the sheet off the elephant. You know, there's, there is a lot of attention to and concern about this committee right now, and I think, I think that's overblown, frankly, and I think that the, some of the concerns that people feel are very much unfounded. That doesn't change the fact those concerns are real. And I think, given that those concerns are in the community right now, for us to then kind of boot from the committee for technicalities that haven't been observed in the past, someone who's central to all of that, it would, would be poorer for, from the standpoint of trying to establish a calmer feeling of greater trust and collaboration with some people in the community who, right now, I think we could use progress on. And so, so for those two reasons, I really just would hope that this isn't the one example that we use to make a point, because I think there would be other spillover negative consequences that I think it's better for our community and for the city government to avoid. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you. Yeah. Attorney David Schoenfeld brings very, very important institutional history and knowledge to this committee. He knows about topics that have been discussed over the 20 years since its inception, and I also know, I'm not going to go into it now, but Daniel knows, I even challenged this being on the docket as it appears tonight, because there was an ordinance, Ordinance 56-0-06, that specifically applied to this committee and terms and term limits. And because this is not a committee like any other board committee or commission, this is a court-decreed committee, and so there was an ordinance about term limits, and it's four years with no, you know, with no designated number. I'm fine with this tonight, I just want to move forward, and, but, so, I mean, I don't even feel that this, this should have just gone in the consent decree, consent agenda like any other. That Ordinance 56-0-06 was established for this committee, because it is not like any other board commissioner committee. It was not formed by city council, it's formed out of the federal court. So I just want to say that. But yes, thank you, Daniel, I agree, I think it's really important to reassign Attorney David Schoenfeld, he's, is a tremendous asset to our community. So, thank you.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Reed with a minute and a half left.
Thank you. Councilmember Kelly, I did not, I was, I was unaware of that ordinance. Does that ordinance, and ordinances certainly supersede council rules, so does that, is that ordinance just, is it silent on? Okay, so it's, and, and since it's silent, in that case, this rule would apply. If it's specifically said that members could be appointed to unlimited terms, then that would supersede council rules, but short of it saying something that conflicts with the rule, the rule would supersede. But, and so thanks for that clarity. Is there any, when is our next Rules Committee meeting? Do we know? Do we have a, are you still Chair? Or who's Chair of Rules? Is Chris, Councilmember Harris? I don't know, so, and don't count this against my time. October 2nd, okay. Is, and so, I don't know why I'm not having a September meeting, but is there any reason why we couldn't just hold this, amend the rule, and then do this in accordance with our rules, as to create a new standard that we can feel, I guess folks feel good about this somehow, or whatever, are willing to do it, but that we can move forward with consistency? Is there a reason that we couldn't hold this?
Well, I guess the technical question to that is, when does his term expire, and when is the next meeting of the committee? I would add to that sort of procedural question, that having a Rules Committee meeting doesn't guarantee that we'll have agreement on a new rule, doesn't guarantee when that rule would then be enacted into, into, into law. You know, I don't think October 2nd is even potentially the end date of that process, and I don't think it's easy for us to predict from this moment either when or how that process would terminate.
Well, I guess, is there an answer to when does his term actually?
According to the web, our website, it says he's already expired. May of '23.
I mean, so he's already expired, and he's been voting on things...
Oh, we have plenty of people...
Hold on, hold on, I'm not, I'm not like saying anything against him, I just want to make the point that he's already been expired, and he's been, you know, making motions and voting on things. Hold on, Claire, I'm not speaking against the guy, I'm just saying that it seems as though it's been fine since May for him to be on the committee, and what is another month or two for us to clarify this rule? And I know my time is...
Respectfully, you're the last person I would have expected to say, what's another month or two of breaking the rule?
Breaking the rule either way.
No, we're, we're suspending the rule as provided for in our rules.
Yeah, but...
I mean, I would, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be snarky here, I would have thought that you would be supportive of the effort to clean this up, make it more transparent, more on the books, less just keeping people around beyond the expiration of their term and letting them vote and looking the other way. This is part of an effort to clean it up, and just waiting around and allowing him to continue to be on the committee with serving an expired term is the opposite of that.
I, I, I agree, and so I appreciate that effort, and thank you for calling out that consistency there, but what I also think is important, and I know my time is up, or nearing being up, it's up, is that, you know, you know, I have residents in my ward who are likely serving on committees, I, I serve on committees with folks who have served their two terms, I think Jane Grover is a great addition to the Equity Empowerment Commission, and she brings things to it. And, you know, and so, you know, are there, are there folks, other folks out there who members of this body might not be supportive of reappointing or suspending the rules because of that particular person? You know, I, I just think this is, because it's about people and them serving the city, this rises to a different level of scrutiny for me than suspending a rule about, you know, whether something's adopted, or whether a liquor license is approved in one meeting or two. So, so that's, that's where I have issue here.
Would the Clerk please take the role on what is now the underlying question, the vote to confirm the reappointment of Ms. Schoenfeld to the Northwestern City Committee?
Councilmember Wayne?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Harald Karis?
Abstain.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
With four voting in favor, one voting against, and one abstention, the motion carries, and the reappointment is confirmed. This brings us to call of the wards. I had a note from Councilmember Harris saying that she fell ill and had to leave the meeting abruptly. We wish her the best, and she wanted her constituents to know that she will reschedule this week's ward meeting as soon as she can. Councilmember Wynn? Councilmember Newsma?
No report.
Councilmember Revelle?
No report.
Councilmember Reed?
Jeez. I have a ward meeting on August 20, I'm sorry, not August 20, I think, the last Thursday of the month, this September, which is September 28th. We're figuring out location, we've been doing them at the Levy Senior Center, and looking forward to that. I have one question that I want to throw out there, I don't know if I can get an answer during Call of the Ward, particularly on something we just voted for. Is Mr. Schoenfeld related to the State Senator or State Representative Schoenfeld?
Do you mean Schoenberg?
Okay, so...
Different names?
Something Schoen, okay. So the answer is no, thank you for that. No further report.
Councilmember Harald Karis?
I have two announcements. Office hours later this month on Friday, the 29th, at Reprise Roasters, I'll be there from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m., so please come with, say hello, and if you have any concerns or issues. And I'll also be at Fleetwood Jordan this, this Friday from 5:00 to 9:00 for the Hispanic Heritage Month kickoff event. Hope to see you folks there.
Councilmember Kelly?
No report.
With that, Councilmember Newsma is recognized to make a motion.
Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes 120/2C, I move that the City Council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding workers' compensation and minutes review. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are 5 ILCS 120/2C, Sections 12 and Sections 21.
Councilmember Newsma moves the City Council resolve itself into an executive session to discuss the items just mentioned. Councilmember Wynn, seconds. Seeing no discussion, would the Clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Wynn? Councilmember Newsma? Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Harald Karis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and at 8:24 p.m., the City Council moves to an executive session to begin immediately in the Council Member Library. Thanks, everybody.